I'd like to call our August 11th ACSD Board Meeting to order. The current time is 6:32 at this point in time. Let's go around and do introductions and we'll start with our friends on Zoom first. Go ahead, Jason. And Laura.
Laura Hartman.
Okay, Mary Heather.
Mary Heather Noble.
Tricia Allen.
Ron Macklin.
Steve Cash.
Wendy Baker, Superintendent.
Barbara Wilson. And our wonderful leaders over here.
Courtney Cron, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Nellie Colazo, Assistant Superintendent of Specialized Services.
Sonia Aflein, Director of Equity Inclusion and Restorative Practices.
Matt Curdy, Director of Finance and Management.
Excellent. At this time, I would like a motion to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Okay, a second? Steve seconded it. And here's Steve. Yay, we have more than a quarrel. Yay. Okay, any comments, additions for the agenda? Seeing none at this time? All those in favor of adopting the agenda as warned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And Laura, you're an aye too, right?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So the agenda has been adopted. First up is our first public comment period. And this is the time where we invite the public to offer public comment. Are there any folks in the room or on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
Nobody on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom and no one in the audience. So then, next up is the approval of the minutes from our last board meeting, which was June 23rd. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 23rd.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Tricia. Any comments, any feedback, input, questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from June 23rd, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, our minutes have been approved. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to Jason for the approval of the ACSD bills.
Thank you. Suzanne and I read bills twice in July and the details of the warrants are summarized in the minutes. We had a couple of questions that were all answered almost immediately. No issues, no concerns. So I would move that we approve the bills as reviewed.
Okay, a second? Okay, thank you, Mary Heather. Any questions?
Thank you, Jason, for doing this during our month off.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
And this is nice. It was Jason's suggestion that we just put it right here in the minutes. So this was excellent. Any other feedback, questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the ACSD bills as listed on the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The bills have been approved. I would now like to turn it over to Dr. Baker for the report of the superintendent.
Okay, we have all kinds of excitement to share, but we'll begin with, as we normally do, with personnel appointments and resignations. You have some before you on the agenda. A couple of things I might draw your attention to. Samantha Farrell Schmidt is joining Bridgeport. She has an in-depth math background, actually. And so she is going to step into Bridgeport Central School as the math instructional specialist there. And so that's something that has taken place over the summer. Gretchen Homan, who is a classroom teacher there, she is going to be joining Mary Hogan, which is an additional classroom teacher. So they will be up to 22, 21, we're in the budget. The rationale for that is that there has been a rash of enrollments there. So that had we not done that, we would have had kindergarten classes at approximately 18, which I decided was not what we needed, particularly based on the nature of the classes. So Megan Sears is now moving down to kindergarten and we've added a second grade teacher Gretchen to that team in that way. Other things that I might draw your attention to. We have Noel Jepson, who is a new special educator that's joining in at Mums. Alana Sadlon is a new paraeducator at Waybridge. And Waybridge also has a new administrative assistant coming up and it's part of the list that I'm putting through here, you know.
The addendum.
That's right, that's extra, you know. So we are staffed generally well, with the exception of some special ed openings and our SLP openings that it seems like we have a chronic challenge filling. But generally speaking, you know, we're circling around it. Some of our alternative programs, we need, you know, a social worker at the high school, given that, you know, Emery, and I'm about to share with you as their families move. So we have a few of those kinds of things, but generally speaking, that, you know, we're doing well. So in addition to what you have in front of you, I would also suggest that you accept the resignation of Emery Clark, which is a social worker at the high school, and Stacy Tommen, who's the payroll coordinator. So Stacy is moving on to a different company. So she is going to be replaced by Sherri Bristol, who is pending your approval, who is currently our Medicaid clerk. So she's just going to move into that position, but it would be nice if she's on, you know, your list for approval as well. James Angel is a paraeducator, 1.0 FTE at the high school. Brittany Bullard is a paraeducator stepping into a vacancy at Shoreham. Rachel Chapman is an administrative assistant, filling Samantha Farrell Schmidt's role at Waybridge. James Gamble is a paraeducator filling a vacancy at Mums. And Timothy Hanley is a campus supervisor filling a vacancy at the high school. So these are for your approval and it represents all the hiring that we've had to do since the last board meeting.
The summer.
To now, exactly, which is a little different.
Sherri Bristol, is the Medicaid position now empty? Or is she taking on both of those?
She's not taking on both. So there'll be a transition period and we'll look carefully at what's needed. The state systems are a little bit also in flux. So we also have, you might remember Erin Robinson in a new role as the Specialized Services Program Coordinator. Erin is absolutely taking that role by storm. And so there are some pieces of the Medicaid work that fall very naturally into that bucket of responsibilities. So we're going to look at it together. You know, as we do any change like this, then we look at it together and say, all right, what's needed based on our structure now and how can we make that work? So we'll be starting that work. Sherri begins her full-time work on Monday of next week. So we will fit in some conversations about how best to handle that. I think she's got everything completed until October 1st. So we've got a little bit of a window of grace.
Medicaid also has a six-month cushion for lagging reimbursements.
Okay.
So it gives us some window of.
Yep, good question.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the appointments and resignations?
I'll make, oh, go ahead, Tricia.
I was just going to say, can we make the motion to approve the appointments and resignations as presented?
Presented by the superintendent?
By the superintendent?
Yep.
Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay, then that's what I move.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any additional questions?
Dr. Baker, you seem excited about this list of appointees.
We have just had an excellent hiring season all the way around, from the beginning to now. And it's just, it's exciting to see people who really are coming to work here and just saying, yeah, oh, you have an opening, how do I fill that? Oh, there's new responsibilities to take on, how can I step up? And that's really been a consistent conversation, you know, throughout our hiring. And that's, I mean, you couldn't ever want anything more than that, so.
And I have to say, having been on the board since 2021, I think it was when we joined, something like that, this is like the first time, I think, starting in August, that we have such a roster of positions filled, you know. So I think that's exciting. You know, that is definitely exciting. Good. Okay, any other comments? If not, all those in favor of approving the appointments and resignations as presented?
I like your words.
Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Steve.
I'm happy to stay in as per usual.
And thank you, Laura. Okay.
All right, so it's now my pleasure to have some team members really introduce themselves to you. You know, and I can couch it a little bit with some of the initiative work they're beginning to take on in the case of Nellie and Sonia. You know, Courtney is sliding into her new responsibilities, of course, from last year. But it's, I think everybody in the district office has been able to take at least a couple of weeks of vacation this summer, which is, I don't know when the last time that happened. But that has put everybody in a good mood, which is very nice. So, you know, Courtney will save your update for last, you know, as we go. And start with Nellie. So you probably remember hiring Dr. Nellie Colazo at some point in time. Someone who even met Nellie. And she is living in Willsboro, New York. And her experience is in the bones of specialized services, from alternative programming to, you know, English as a second language, to, you know, serving in all capacities in services, whether they're OT or PT or that are needed, both to support students on 504s as well as having individualized education plans, you know, and finding a way to have those services grow so that they're more, you know, in our, what we call a tier two capacity, or even growing into a tier one piece. So she is deeply immersed into the Vermont special ed scene. She has a mentor, Carrie Lutz, who happens to be the Special Educator of the Year in May of 2025. So that's nice. You know, and she's also working closely with Megan Roy, who you remember, when I was the acting special ed director, I quickly contracted with, just to be able to kind of help us keep moving into our direction that we need to go. So, you know, Nellie's begun to do some of those pieces and maybe you could just say a little bit about yourself and sort of what's going on in your world.
So I want to say thank you so much for welcoming me to this team. I've said this from the beginning, this entire team and all of you have been so generous and so welcoming and it just makes it a lot easier when you transition into this type of a position. So I gratefully, I am very grateful for it and I appreciate it. So it has been a lot of input. I think I'm a little bit over 30 days now and I've had the privilege of going to IB and being immersed in that experience. And also I've met with Carrie once and so I've had that experience. We've met with Megan twice. I've had the opportunity to already meet with the advisory team that worked with everyone last year. And the leadership retreat last week was simply amazing because I was able to build relationships with everyone there. So they all want me to come back, so I think I'm doing well. But overall, I feel like the goal is just, right, this year's about really collecting information and trying to just make everyone work a little bit smarter and not harder, right? And so we can just build a team that's strong and do what's best for kids. I made sure that I told everyone, I don't have an agenda. My agenda is to just make us better. So that is my hope and I am just very fortunate to have this team, including Matt and Wendy, because they have not let me fail yet. They remind me to slow down because my brain goes 100 miles per hour. But it's been a privilege and I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Yelly and I have an appointment with Cassie, who is the Director of Special Education with the AOE tomorrow, just to be able to continue to kind of ground us in that 60-day orientation. And so so far, she continues to return to work, which is good. So next to her.
Oh, go ahead, Steve.
I'm sorry.
I got an email from you about the storm damage on July 11th. So was that your very first day?
It was. It was my very first Friday. So it was quite interesting because I feel like Matt and Bruce would have had it under control, but I had the opportunity to talk to Wendy and I said to her, like, what do you need me to do? And she goes, well, you're like on day three. And I'm like, I know, but that's kind of what you hired me for. So what would you like me to do? And she gave me her task list and emailing all of you was definitely part of that. And so, yeah, that was kind of like day three.
I appreciate you jumping into the role. I saw that and I was like, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't like to leave them.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And Ellen has joined us online.
Oh, good.
Hi, Ellen.
I was on vacation. I think I was actually in the Space Needle in Seattle. And Nellie said, I'm here with Bruce. And I'm like, okay, and here's what you need to do, you know. And so that was great. I know the feeling. Okay, so next to her is Dr. Sonia Aflein.
You got it.
Yes. And she's come all the way from outside of Chicago with a number of birds, a husband, a U-Haul truck, you know, right? And she has moved her body and soul here to Middlebury and is joining us as the Director of Equity Inclusion and Restorative Practice, which you probably remember is a new position that relates specifically to the area of the strategic plan, that two areas. One, that speaks to our commitment to ensuring that identity-based harm is not part of the culture of what students or staff are experiencing or families. And also, as we're thinking about moving from a rules-centered approach that's very typical in schools, to a human-centered approach and creating a proactive community of care, you know, in an inclusionary way, but also through our operational ways of doing things that feature that first and foremost. So Sonia is deeply getting used to what she's supposed to do in her role, as we all are. Like, what does this mean? She's the belle of every ball that she's in because everybody's been awaiting her arrival in some form, you know, with bated breath. She's taken the point on our truancy work as we are really trying to come at that with a different level of horsepower, since, you know, the high school sometimes can have 20% of their student body that is chronically absent at the very least. So and that's not unusual and that's a nationwide challenge, but it's like, okay, let's really get a handle of this and make some proactive pieces. And Sonia's already provided some nice leadership around that. So do you want to just introduce yourselves and say hello?
So again, my name is Sonia Aflein. I'm really excited to be here. I echo Nellie and the warm welcome that I've received. Everyone has been so kind, all the way to Darcy inviting me into her home. Like, she actually let me stay with her, which I can't, like, even. Just, everyone's so kind here. Really just wonderful people. I'm excited to be able to work with everyone. Like Dr. Baker said, I have my hands in a lot of different pots at the moment because equity, inclusion, restorative practices really touches everything. So I have started the work with the truancy. We'll keep looking at that. Over the time that I was at the leadership retreat, I got to really get to know all the building principles and leaders in the district, like, on a different level, which was nice to really see what everyone is thinking, the shared understanding of equity and the direction that we want to take the district. You know, everyone's on the same page and it was nice to really get to hear their thoughts and see the district from a lot of different perspectives. So, yeah, I'm really excited to be here. I think it's going to be a slow pace, but solid foundation. So I'm really, this first year is all about getting to know everyone in the district, the community, and building that strong foundation so that as we lift the inclusion, the sense of belonging, the restorative practices, we have a firm foundation so that it can really be solid and not have any hiccups down the road. So, yeah, I'm so thankful that you all have me here and I'm happy to be here and open to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? One of the things that Sonia is leaning into also relates to the strategic plan and our desire to have our behavioral data together. So we're really able to take a look at what are we measuring, you know, and what does that look like? And, you know, and how are we tracking various ways that we're thinking about our students and the ways students are responding to us? So she's already deep in figuring that out, you know. And both she and Nellie and Courtney, actually. Matt may be the only outlier here. Everybody's got whiteboards installed, every day. And there's always stuff on them.
I use my windows.
So there's lots of good work happening, you know, as we go. So one of the initiatives that was a cornerstone of our leadership retreat and is actually really reflective of, I think, the way that our organization is moving, Courtney is going to share. We talked a lot last year about, you know, how we need to put resources in building capacity for math, you know, at the K8 level and ensuring that, you know, we are looking at student success data and defining that in really important ways. And I think what the Leaders Retreat really unearthed is that this district has built a lot of really important and critical infrastructure, whether it's our coordinated curriculum, you know, that use the IB framework to advance or Edge a climber and our systems that can capture data and so that we can begin to look at it, talk about it, think about where students are, or, you know, the way that we do professional development, a number of other things. This year, what seems compelling is that we are shifting our focus squarely from what the adults are doing to what the students are experiencing. You know, Dick Elmore, many, many years ago, was kind of famous for saying something along, you know, the power of a school is measured by the daily work of the students. And so, as part of our NEASK and IB authorization process, you know, we've spent some time developing a shared understanding of what a high-quality learning experience looks like. And that's been through our system a lot. We looked at it at our Leaders Retreat and Courtney has a draft of that just for you to see because it will provide the cornerstone of what it looks like as we continue to morph into an instructionally focused organization. So that strong classrooms, wherever they are, however many we have, right, they're all strong classrooms, you know, in that sense. So that's Courtney's task, is to kind of bring that to life. So, so that's Courtney's task, is to kind of bring that to light tonight for you and just talk a little bit about that and about, about what's going to happen with that in the next um, couple of weeks.
I would start by just saying, um, before we came over here, Nellie said to me, you feel kind of giddy, like, what's going on with you? And I don't know, I'm in a good mood, but if you look at the visual representation of our team here in the front row, it's double what it was last year with Matt and I sitting here. I know, we're feel, like, we feel powerful in the district office because it feels like work has a home and a place, um, and we can do it. So that's feeling awesome. We're fresh off of our Leaders Retreat where we um, looked at this. I'll just walk these right around.
For those that are online, in the weekly spotlight, you'll be able to link to a copy of that.
Yes. And the members of the Student Outcomes Committee first saw a draft of this shared understanding of high-quality learning last spring. Um, I think at our inaugural meeting. And it's even um, come some distance since then. For those who haven't heard sort of the origin story of this document, um, when our NEASK IB visiting team was here last October, they met with many stakeholders from around the district. And when they sent us our reflective report about um, what we could work on during our self-study, one of the recommendations that was really a non-negotiable was that we establish as a district what they call a shared understanding of high-quality learning. What does that look like for students in your schools? And I, I kind of thought we had one, but I couldn't articulate it. Turns out, nobody could and nobody could point to a document where we said, here's what we believe in for students when they're in the classroom. Um, and so this started by every s- school in our district coming up with their own shared understanding and so, during an early release day and submitting all of that work in. Um, and then the district leadership team, with all the principals, worked to massage those nine definitions down into one. They brought it back to their staffs, they brought back feedback, and it's sort of been in this give and change mode since I'd say late winter um, of last school year. And as Wendy already said, we spent a lot of time talking about this document at our Leadership Retreat and thinking about the ways um, that we want to operationalize this on the ground this year. Wendy's planning our opening day around this document. We're going to have all members of our community working in different groups throughout the day um, with our shared understanding. And then from there, springboarding into the year. But I'll just reiterate what I think the most important thing is Wendy said, which is that um, NEASK and IB in this, they call it the Collaborative Learning Protocol. It's their joint accreditation process, really focused on inputs versus evidence of impact. And I think what we've been creating for a long time here are inputs. Things teachers do, um, making coordinated curriculum, units, activities. But where we've fallen short and where we have room to grow is really starting to collect evidence of impact. How do we know that these things we've created are making a difference? Um, and during our self-study process, one of our, they're called learning principal teams, unearthed um, a lack of evidence of learning. And it doesn't mean it's not happening, but we, we don't have evidence of it. We're not saving student work for reflection, um, for analysis in a systemic way. So it is happening in pockets. There's plenty of teachers who would say, look at all of this student work I saved. But um, at the Leadership Retreat, we talked about moving forward with the goal of documenting student learning as evidence of impact because then you can really start to reflect, not only on a single um, assignment, but on work over time and on growth, even over many years would be really exciting. So, that's where we are with this document. Um, all ACS staff are going to have an opportunity to give feedback on it again during pre-service.
And just a quick question.
Yes.
I think you mentioned that this will be in the next um, weekly, this document.
It's in today's. It's the one that went out today. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'll be a little later than usual, but yes. Yes. Yep, so it's um, you know, it's kind of the where are we going? What do we believe in and what does that look like? You know, it's um, there's a lot of beautiful work that this district has done over time and centering that work um, around what is, what do students feel and experience? And how do we ensure that that's happening consistently, equitably, and um, and effectively? Um, you know, that's, that's the work that we're able to focus on. And, and I think, I think that, that feels really good. It, it's almost like a mark of coming out of transition and in, into that next chapter and that focus. Um, one of the other things that um, that, that Courtney talked about is terms of evidence of learning. Nellie led a nice session at the, at the, um, with, with Sonya and Courtney's help at the Leadership Retreat in having everybody come together and identify quantitative, qualitative, other, other types of data that, that we have or we want that show us evidence of learning, that we can put together to determine, you know, are we making the right impact across classrooms, across our system, across students? Um, and, and, and again, all that feels very um, possible and like it has good inertia that can bring it forward and good staff to be able to do that. Mary Heather and Ben Ron.
Yeah, just one more question. I'm wondering if this is something that you can incorporate also into the website or something so that public has access to it? Once, once it's sort of finalized, I think it would be a really good, good thing for our community to have access to as well.
Yeah, I think Emily has in her mind that she's going to make a community or parent-friendly version of that, which should come after our staff has the, as the kind of the, yeah, the ability to kind of chew it up a little bit more um, on the, on the 20th. And then we'll, we'll go from there. Then it will be, we're going to work this out right, you know, in its way and see where it takes us for now. Ron?
Um, I have a question, both for Dr. Afeline and Dr. Colosso. Um, I know it's going to be a first impression because you've only been here I mean, between like one and four weeks, but I think first impression is going to be really valuable. Um, I think you're both eminently qualified for the positions and we're, I'm really excited to see how, how you slot in and, and, and help make the district better. But, so what feel like new challenges to you about this uh, district? That you haven't experienced before? I guess that's kind of the general question. What feels new and challenging about this?
You go first.
Yeah, go first.
Um, well, for me, some of the challenges that feel new don't have as much to do with this district as it does from, for me, coming from a different um, setting. But what I've found in the little bit of time that I've been here is that a lot of the things that are different actually have a lot of similarities. When you take away the, the exact, like, this is rural and I was in an urban area. Um, a lot of the, the things that connect us as humans really don't... The setting is just the setting. The human connection is the same no matter where you are. Um, so that's been something that I've been learning, just kind of being in the community. Um, I think, I don't really see it as um, a challenge in a negative way, just that um, having shared language and shared understanding is really critical in driving any initiative forward. So that's been one of the biggest um, kind of things that I've seen in the district that maybe is a priority, not maybe, it is a priority. Um, but otherwise, I think everybody is excited about the work. They want to do the work. Everyone's conversation who, um, the dialogue is about kids and kids are the priority. So as long as, you know, students are at the forefront of everyone's mind, I think we're moving in the right direction. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think there's been any like glaring challenges, mostly coming from me just being in a new setting.
One of the things that uh, I, I've observed already, I mean, uh, Sonya is, is our resident disruptor. Right? She has to be, that's her job. So, you know, and, and, and a lot of, you know, equity work is disrupting the thinking that we have that gets in the way of equity work. And, and, and I've seen her do that. Um, and, and I've seen our leaders respond well to that, you know? Uh, the response to that isn't, um, oh, you just don't understand us yet. You know, you just hang right on and then you'll get that. It's tell us more about what's on your mind. You know, what are you thinking about? And, and that is, um, you know, that, you know, it just speaks to, to how wonderful that the leadership team is here and that they're here to do the work that is outlined in that strategic plan, either because they were part of creating it or they came because of it, you know? And so, so that is a, is a unifying vision um, and commitment that, that I think, you know, Sonya has al- already felt and is, is going to be able to lead us forward well. And so it's, it's just been impressive to watch that dynamic unfold. Yeah.
So it's my turn. So I, I would echo everything that Sonya said. I think for me, I don't call it a challenge. I call it an area of focus, is definitely the common language. Um, I think, um, I know that I have different acronyms. As you all know, special education is full of acronyms, right? Like, we could probably write a, a dictionary on acronyms that we use and then you add all 50 states and people will get lost, right? So I am well-versed in New York State acronyms for special education. So I catch myself calling an IEP meeting, a CSE meeting, and I call it call a special education meeting, right? Because I'm trying to make sure that I have everyone's common language. But I use all three just to make sure we're all on the same page. So, um, also I, for me, right? I, I'm well-versed in special education. It doesn't matter what state I can jump into, I could probably talk it like in circles. So I have to catch myself to slow down because I could easily lose someone that's like, what? What would you charge your money? What is that, right? Um, so for me, the area of focus is definitely the common language, right? To make sure that I have my team following me and is with me and at some point they're leading and I'm following them, right? Um, but also being well-versed and knowing the families. I think that's an area of focus for me too, um, because special education would not be successful without them. And I think that one of the most important things for me is to build those relationships because I am new. And um, I don't want to be judged on history. I want to be judged on who I am and what I can bring. So that's one piece that I really find very vital to being successful in this role. Um, and so I would say, I don't have areas of challenge, I have areas of focus because I know special ed pretty well. Um, but I think having that common language and knowing my team, that's vital for me. So that's my area of focus.
Thank you.
Yep. I really appreciated being able to show off the way Vermont does things because I think, you know, um, both of our new team members are coming from states that are a lot more top-down, right? Your district sends a memo, here's what you need to do and it's expected and this is how that goes. And, and Vermont, um, as long as I've been part of the Vermont culture, that's not how it is, right? You know, we talk about things. We say, hey, we're going to head in this direction. District folks provide leadership, gather people together, input resources, think about how are we going to get there and how we measure it. But, but it's got to be something that we're all in on together. And so, um, you know, I, it's, it's been nice to just watch Nellie and Sonya begin to, like, that's actually real. Like, people are really engaged and they really want it, like, if, you know, I don't, I don't have to prepare the PowerPoint. I can just say, what are your thoughts on the following? We've got to make a plan and we've got to figure that out. And it's really been wonderful to just watch them just sit back and, and enjoy the beauty of that, which it, that's not the case everywhere, you know? And it's a strength of how we do our work, so it's great. Go ahead, Mary Heather.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, Nellie, appreciate you just mentioning um, developing relationships with families and getting to know the families because that's really, I mean, really, the way special education is supposed to work is that families are an essential part of that team, you know? And um, and it's not always, uh, it doesn't always happen that way. So I appreciate you, um, just calling that out as a priority.
So, I will say, I am a mom of a special ed kid, so you always wear that hat first because you want everyone to treat your child the way you would like to treat them. So it's a form of respect, right?
So Matt does continue to show up to work. He's, he has, um, you know, done, done some great work this summer, um, you know, in two ways. And, and maybe Matt, um, you can, you can talk a little bit about that, but then also fold some of the summer construction project pieces, you know, into, if we skip around just a little bit. Uh, you know, what's, what's been wonderful to watch is um, Matt having bandwidth to be able to support the Facilities Committee, to be the interface, you know, with the architects and, and continue to get that, keep that process going. We would not be able to do that without Matt's leadership and he's done a really great job of it this summer. And Matt and I, um, with the, with the arrival of new team members, have been able to do some simple things like talk about, okay, how, what's the structure by which we will monitor the student services budget? And how might we, you know, do, like, some of the regular things that um, that you set up to do to make sure that you're far ahead, you know, of, of any of the, of the challenges that, that you might um, find so that, you know, as you're, as you're able to do your planning, you, you've got all those pieces in place. This is the first year that Matt will have started a year with the same superintendent.
Wow.
In his, in his tenure here in ACSD. So, you know, that's just kind of perspective, right?
Wow.
Yeah, um, and, you know...
And the first time a superintendent has started with the same business manager in...
Longer time. Also interesting, right?
Yes.
Keep that trend going, yeah. So, you know, um, it, it's, he's really been able to also really get to know the work of the Facilities Team, the IT, you know, the, the Human Resources. It just, I think in a different kind of way, you know, just getting to this place. So what would you like to share, Matt? And, and then fold into construction updates?
As we were like reveling in passing budget last spring, realized there was like this whole chunk of time between, you know, the end of the school year and, and when things fire back up again for budget season that we have to work with. And, and that led to this uh, you know, idea of thinking of like operations as a new development cycle. And um, we had our first Operations Summit with the directors from fi- um, the Finance Team as well as Facilities, Food Service, Tech, HR. And, you know, sat in a room and, and talked through some of the big picture things just like, you know, any, any leadership retreat would do. And um, I think, you know, developed some real good synergy as a group there, but also brought that forward to um, to the principals and are excited to continue to bring that work forward to create greater collaboration and sort of that um, that mesh of, of good like communication between the Operations Team and the, the Building Leaders. Because an ounce of prevention is worth however many pounds of cleanup work, so. So that's been exciting. The capital improvement planning process has been an exciting engagement with TruX. That was um, the first thing that Dr. Baker mentioned. And um, big props to Jason for holding down a lot of that on the, the board side of things and, and keeping us on task as we've negotiated everybody's summer schedules and tried to keep this timeline relatively uh, unharmed by the um, you know, potential for interruptions. So heading into the end of the summer, we feel like we've kind of got a, a wrap on some of the work that we've done for Process A, which as a reminder is the three Middlebury Schools. Uh, we've sent that programmatic analysis and facilities analysis and survey analysis off to TruX for their um, conceptual design phase. And so that's kind of with them at the, the drawing table right now, the old drawing board. Um, and we're, you know, thinking about Process B next and starting to um, uh, look forward to the kickoff. We've got a Facilities meeting tomorrow, so that'll be kind of when we, we shift into that next gear there. Um, as far as the bandwidth that we have to, you know, worry about the, the other stuff that, you know, kind of um, wasn't possible before we had our full team here. I think, yeah, it's uh, there's always areas of the budget that need to be studied and, and cleaned up and it's, it's been great to dig into those and um, refine our understanding of the block thing that we just built, because we built a block thing. And now there's going to be all this work coming down the pipeline to say, you know, what, what was that that we just did? And, and how do we learn from um, a year of... And how do we learn from, um, a year of, um, planning as we start to implement that, that spending plan? Um, and bring it back for analysis and, and sort of the design cycle there, so.
You want to move into summer construction?
Sure. Yeah, I just got a quick update from Bruce while we were getting settled here. Um, we talked first and foremost about the high school roof, which, you know, unless you were really on a beach, you probably heard about already. But, uh, we've engaged in two different, um, phases of the fix there. The first phase was to shore up the substructure through, um, some demolition work and cleanup work, um, and then reconstruction of the, this frame that sort of underlies the, um, the roof, which is ultimately what failed. Uh, Silver Maple was the contractor who, who performed that. They have finished, um, and put a temporary membrane down for, until I think next Monday, so a week from today. Vermont Roof, Roofing Company will come in and, uh, do their thing, which will be to put the permanent, uh, roof covering down. And that will be that. I guess all of their materials are already here and are on the roof. We're off to a good start. Uh, in addition, uh, Silver Maple also assisted in some of the smaller repair work based on that, the wind damage that we saw. So the cupola got put back on the snack shack. And I think the dugout might've been rebuilt. I'm not sure if that is finished yet or not. Um, but that's pretty much the extent of that. The other thing that was supposed to start in June at the high school, um, that is just starting to fire up right now is the stormwater, um, runoff project. And this is, uh, done in conjunction with the town. It's, it's a subsidized, uh, thing. It's not, it's not just an ACSD thing, uh, but it's designed to, um, add, uh, for any roof parcel that's over three acres in size to add, uh, special culverts to help with some of the, the wastewater diversion. Um, so they'll be putting three culverts in. You might've seen a big old digger over by, uh, central office. That's one of the sure signs that they're about to start. Um, so one of those units will go in by central office. One will go in the southwest corner of the career center. And the other one will go by the H wing, sort of a triangle around the, the high school. Um, and they will catch water and send it away from the building towards wherever they want it to go. That, based on the late start, has the potential to have some interrupting, uh, interruption to traffic patterns around the high school building. Uh, not much we can do about that.
So fun.
You know, contractors, uh, really love when you rush them. Um, but, yeah, like I said, that was, that's a little bit behind schedule. They estimate two weeks of work ahead. So it'll be right on the line there for, um, opening day. Um, other than that, we wrapped up, uh, chop up of, um, Dr. Baker's office into two smaller offices in central office, which has allowed all of our, um, our team to fit in that building. Uh, we converted a, um, unused room in the basement to a secondary conference space. So we've got some flexibility there for smaller meetings. Um, we've also done a small, uh, renovation of a suite at Mums that will now hold the Fundring Brook Alternative Program. The, uh, next iteration of the, um, ACP, what was known as ACP Middle School, um, has, uh, moved in there. In good news, as far as money spending goes, we worked around the, um, sort of, uh, blooming scope of work that we were looking at to renovate the career center aspire space for the high schools programs. No, no renovations needed there. Um, we are, uh, going to use one classroom in the, um, was it B wing? And then the existing aspire space will be enough to, to house the other program. So, uh, dodged a half million dollar bullet there just to, you know, uh, have the roof blow off. But, you know, um, the insurance, uh, will, will be nice. Uh, will certainly help to mitigate some of the costs that we incurred there.
The facilities team cleans about 400,000 square feet of educational space. And, I mean, and it's, I mean, they're, you, you, you know, you can see as you walk in here. I mean, they're, they're doing a great job, um, including, I mean, we, the leadership, uh, team did part of their retreat at Ripton Elementary School last week so that, um, they could participate in the thinking about what are the, one of the ways in which this, um, facility or property might be important to educational programming, you know, that's happening in ACSD, um, to, which is part of the community brainstorming process that the working committee is doing right now. So they were able to be there. Tracy Harrington led us through that. And, and it looks absolutely beautiful there.
It was gorgeous, yeah.
It's absolutely gorgeous, you know? Um, and, and so, you know, it's, uh, our, our facilities team, I don't know what percentage, I think Bruce is using AI to determine what percentage done, right? You know, we are in this process. So I don't know what number that works with at the moment. But, um, but, but the teams are coming along very well and our buildings are looking good. So I, it's.
One other little like feel-good nugget. We had a anonymous reparent gift at Mary Huguen to the pre-K program to put a new fence up around their little playground.
Aww.
Wasn't enough for a whole fence. So we stitched it together with a safety grant from Visbit. And, uh, that got us most of the way towards, um, a new fence, which we've, we've done. And that'll help, um, brighten up that neck of the woods for the, um, the littlest ACSD students and, uh, help, uh, make that a safer area for them to play in.
Any questions about anything you've heard so far?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, uh, I am, I am the luckiest superintendent around. And, um, and, and what's nice is that, you know, in our weekly spotlights, we'll be able to have more discreet pieces, you know, that are moving forward in, in these different ways. I mean, for a time Courtney and I were the only folks, you know, in the office with, you know, administrative licenses to oversee educational program last year. And, I mean, I am so grateful to Courtney for hanging in there in that process. But, you know, it, it's a, it's a, we, we obviously can make greater progress on the things that are our strategic priorities. And that's really nice to see. So, um, number two, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, it's so much of a question, more comment on this shared understanding of high quality learning and just thinking about the work we have to do on the student outcomes committee. Um, I'll be very curious to see how we integrate that into the work and just, um, yeah, I'm, I'm excited to see how those pieces kind of come together. We haven't met on that committee in a while. Um, but yeah, I'm excited to have this come into that.
Same.
Yep. Okay, keep going. Yep. Okay. So, um, number three is the Ripton Shoreham and Bridgeport Community Engagement Updates. We've talked a little bit about this. Both, um, both of those, um, community engagement initiatives are continuing to move forward. The, um, the next, uh, chapter working group that is focused on the Ripton Elementary School facility and sort of educational opportunities and what's, what's happening, um, around that is meeting, um, they're collecting information now. They're meeting August 20th, I think, is the next meeting of that crew. Emily is doing a great job in moving this work forward. Um, David Hoenshaw is the independent consultant that is, is helping to lead a structured decision-making process that relates to, to surfacing what are the values that are inherent that relate to, to, to this question? And then, uh, you know, and then how do we match those with, with feasibility, you know, structures as we move ahead? So, so, so that's well underway. Um, and, and she's gotten feedback from across the, um, stakeholders in ACSD um, and in the community to, to, to be able to bring to, to that meeting, you know, when we meet next on the 20th. The, um, group in Bridgeport and Shoreham is also underway. Their task, if you remember, is to, um, is to design option number three, which, uh, came out of the original, uh, process that we went through in the spring to determine, um, how to make the strongest classrooms for, um, for learners, particularly, um, that, that as, as Courtney, you know, uh, showed in looking at our three, um, you know, our three, four, five data need, really, we need to, we need to set ourselves up so that students are able to make more than one years of growth, you know? Um, in, in, in a, in a community fashion. And so, so what is the strongest way to do that? The educators have weighed in that it is simpler to be able to do that in a single grade configuration. Um, you know, parents weighed in last spring that the K two, three, five combined was not the right, uh, option at that time in that way. Um, but a K five, um, in Bridgeport where Shoreham and Bridgeport students are learning together with preschool being moved and expanded into Shoreham Elementary School surfaced as, um, as an option that, that, um, was worthy of a design. And so that group, um, it, she has, I think, 10, it's 10 to 12 parents that have signed up to participate in that conversation as well as the administrators from both buildings. Once the teachers are on board, they, they of course will, will be, um, connecting in as well. And Matt and Bruce are also providing some staffing assistance in that and sort of Courtney is needed. But their, their task, yeah, both commit, both groups are tasked with putting together reports for the board. Um, we're shooting for the end of October for both processes, um, to say, here is the result of our thinking. And the Bridgeport Shoreham group, um, will be able to, um, share their design um, with those communities at large, similar to the way that we did that when we looked at the other two options. So that, um, the community feedback will be part of what is presented to the board, you know, in, in its report. So you will have the opportunity to, to consider that configuration at the beginning of budget season, you know, for, um, the next year with understanding, um, the design that parents and educators and administrators have co-written. Um, should it be something that you wish to do? And an understanding of, of the community's feedback about how they feel about the option that you are considering. So, so if all goes well, all that will be delivered to you, um, at the end of October. And the report relative to the different options, um, that have surfaced for Ripton Elementary School will also be delivered to the board toward the end of October. So that's, hopefully those will, will continue, you know, on their timeline. Yep. Any questions about that?
Lot happening.
Well, then we have Act 73 updates. Yes.
Yep.
There is, um, there is not a lot happening, uh, at least, you know, in, in the public eye at the moment in, in those areas. Um, you know that the redistricting task force has been assembled and has had their first meeting on, uh, August 1st. Um, and, and there are a series of meetings. They, they've established a meeting schedule. The next one is, uh, August 19th. Um, and, um, they, most interestingly, um, the GIS folks have created a school district, uh, tool where you can actually go on and you can make different districts, you know, based on whatever you want to explore. You can click on individual towns and say, what if these towns were together? And what if those districts were together? And, and it will give you the grand list totals. It will give you ADM based on FY25 data, which, um, you know, our straight, our straight ADM is okay. However, uh, our, if they start to use weighted ADMs, that's not okay for us because we use the old software system in FY25. FY26 was where our students who, um, who have socioeconomic challenges are more accurately weighted. So we'll keep a close eye on that. Straight numbers of kids is okay to be utilized, um, in that sense. So there are, um, a number of different, you know, um, political alliances forming and beginning to, to, you know, um, determine whether they want to weigh in or how they want to weigh in. If you listen across the state, you have everything from nothing will happen because it's an election year in the legislature. And, and, and that, that will prohibit anybody from making widely unpopular decisions, which it's fairly clear that, that, um, everyone else is happy if somebody else's, uh, else's district changes, right? But then if it's your own, that all of a sudden feels a little different. I don't know how that will play out along the process. Um, and then there are some people who feel like, no, the legislature is really ready to make some of those changes. Scott Beck has been very clear that, um, you know, that committee's task force job is simply to make three recommendations and the legislature will take them up and decide, you know, and, and it may or may not resemble anything like any of the recommendations. On the committee are two former, um, one former commissioner and one former secretary of education. Um, you know, and, and the other, um, superintendents are, are people I know who are very pragmatic, I would say. And, uh, you know, so it will be interesting to see how this work evolves. Um, Matt and I, um, did a little bit of, of modeling work trying to, um, pull actually something a little bit similar to the school, to the toolkit together. Um, because I think one of the most important things for us is, is, um, what happens with the amount of money that comes in to a particular district depending upon its configuration? So if the, based on the foundation formula, which weights, um, scarcity, for example, is a district that has, um, you know, outlying towns that don't have very many people in them, actually in a better position for its students to receive more dollars because of the way the formula is configured. Um, so, so we spent a little bit of time looking at that and, and seeing, you know, it's possible that actually, for example, if all of Addison County is together, then there are more dollars that come in rather than the, the, the four districts that are solely contained in Addison County. And more district, more funds that might come in if we are, um, the Western, what is it, Western Addison District, uh, you know, the one that includes part of Rutland and, and all of Addison County, right? So we're watching those dynamics carefully and seeing how those play out because you need, our interest obviously is opportunity for students. And, and you need resources to be able to create opportunity. And so, so, um, just making sure that we have our eye on the way any of those conversations actually impact the dollars that arrive in the district compared to what the districts have, you know, that they're utilizing now and in something that we try to make apples to apples.
And Wendy, as a reminder, this work is, is happening with a deadline in the fall. Yes? No?
Is it December? Um, so the.
November, December?
I think December. Is that what you're, is that what you're thinking, Matt? December is when the report needs to come by. Interestingly enough, the, there's another committee that is on voting districts, voting wards.
Okay.
That, that actually, they start their work in October, right? So they, in order for them, I think the idea was that they lag a couple of months behind thinking that the redistricting task force may have had a direction at that point.
Yep.
So that they can begin to think about some of the, the way that, that, um, those, the voting pieces will be able to, to underlie that. So, um, you know, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I, I feel that there is, um, a lot of community interest in this work that's going on. Um, and, and that's good. You know, that's good. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I was worried. Um, there didn't seem to be very much unrest about not voting for school budgets anymore, you know, in communities. And I thought, oh, gosh, that's such a huge change for Vermont. I was hoping that, that, that the rest of the process wouldn't also have a lack of community engagement. However, I think, um, I think everyone is seeing that there's a greater degree of community engagement in this process, um, already even, you know? And, and they haven't, they haven't really even quite gotten off the ground. So, so I, I mean, that's good, right? You want community engagement so that whatever direction we go in, it feels like this is something that was widely understood. And that, um, the consequences of whatever it is are, were, were clear. And everybody's like, well, let's, that's a, that's a road that we're going to have to go down together and we'll figure that out. So.
I know they're going to have, I think, two community forums. Right? I don't, I haven't heard anything about them scheduling them yet.
I think, um, I think it, the commission on the future of public education is handling the community forums for that, I think. Is that still the case? Do you know? They changed that?
No. Since Megan abdicated her role, I, I wasn't even sure if that commission was still.
Right.
Operational.
Right. Yep. And, and, and that, so that remains to be seen, you know? I, I think that was, that was the vision that left a legislative session. And so how that works, you know, I, I don't really know.
Yeah, right. Cause that'll, I think, be critical to really allow people to weigh in in a meaningful way is to have those community forums.
Yeah.
And hopefully enough locate, you know, good locations where people can actually attend.
Well, whether you have a kid or not, every taxpayer is going to have what their tax rate is now and what the tax rate is after whatever the thing is.
Yeah, everyone's impacted.
People want to be able to know what that's going to be, right? For better or for worse.
Are there sort of questions about? Go ahead, Steve.
Um, have you heard about school boards engaging with the task force at all? Have you heard about school boards engaging with the task force at all about governance structures? Specifically, it sounds like there's a lot of conversation about S U and S D. I'm wondering what you're hearing. As far as opportunities or anything we should be aware of there.
I I think what I'm hearing is that um that especially as boards are coming back into their. Their meeting schedules, right? Many boards will kind of be off in July, you know, so. So as those are ramping up, um that there is a definite um desire to to ensure that. People are heard and they're heard in the right way at the right time. I think right now is a little bit of a um. Feeling out of of the way the commission is going to start working and the direction that they're going to begin to go in. And and so I I would say, I would say we should know more after the August nineteenth meeting about what that might be looking at. The Vermont School Boards Association did provide testimony, you know, to the first meeting. Um you can see that online in in the meeting materials. And they, their testimony at this point wasn't content related, it was more, this has to be a public process. It has to involve public input, you know, and and it has to be um. Something that is as devoid of politics and as centered in the pragmatics that fuels student opportunity. That is the point. Uh that that was the nature, I think, of the school board association's testimony. It, I think it will be critical for school boards to take the lead on this communication as opposed to superintendents. Who who really took the lead on providing the testimony in the creation of of H four fifty-four. I I think um, you know, school boards represent, you know, um that all, all of the towns, you know, and and the community interests. That that go into public schools. And I think that is gonna be crucial this time around, that that is, that is the voice, that is essential. To to this process. Yep, so that's, we're looking for those opportunities and and I will be passing those along. Immediately, you know, as soon as we're able to see them.
All right, yeah, I imagine at some point we all, if we're not already, begin to kind of be the conduit. For some of that public engagement and just making sure there's some sort of way to go with it. So could you see Jason as a handle?
Yes, Jason.
Hi, um Dr. McDowell, if you could clarify if the four thousand student. Um size of districts that is sort of the target or goal in legislation is, is that just headcount or is that the weighted students?
So um, both were thrown around and uh and, you know, we've attempted to to dive into that, I think. And and so I I think what we're assuming right now is that it is headcount. That's the most conservative assumption. And so that's, that's what we're operationally assuming right now. Um and 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 we'll see, you know. It it also says to the extent practical. Um there is a nice slide that that I might include in our next board meeting that that says. When this task force is putting these districts together, here are about eight or nine things that the law says they need to attend to. And one of those things is equitable distribution of resources across, you know, um. Some of our most vulnerable students, although it doesn't say it quite like that. Um and so, you know, i- it would be. It would not be a surprise if the weights appear in this conversation in some way. Um that process just isn't clear quite yet. Any other questions about that?
Mary Heather. Trying to think of the best way to articulate this, but obviously, I mean, you and Matt are kind of already doing the work of. Kind of anticipating the possibilities. And, you know, if if this happens, then if this, you know. And I think, um, I guess I I just have questions around. Not just the sort of financial aspect, but certainly, you know, there's the curricular question, certainly for our district, you know, we're an I B district. We're the only I B district. Um what happens to our curriculum when we end up, you know, in these arranged marriages? And so I, I'm, I'm, um, and I'm sure I'm not the only one kind of losing sleep over. How to prepare for this and how to. I mean, I think we we all sort of recognize that there's an expiration dates on on board configurations. As they exist now. Um but we still have responsibility to our taxpayers, our students, our families. Um and so I'm sort of curious how we currently with the agency that we have now. Um anticipate and prepare for, you know, how do we ready ourselves for this change? And and I know this isn't an easy question to answer, but I'm, I'm wondering. Yeah, how do we um not only prepare for the, you know, communication and engagement for for our families and our um stakeholders? But how, what are some of the things that maybe are even just in our blind spots right now that um. Superintendents and staff might have on their minds or, you know, like, oh, you know. I see something coming and we may not see it and we may be blindsided. So I'm curious. How we can help sort of gather up those things that we might not be thinking of or, you know, make a list of things to keep checking in on. As we proceed in this process, because I'm worried about how this is gonna unroll. I'm worried about the impact on our families. And the extent to which we can help uh provide stability in this process. I think is one of our biggest responsibilities as our time forward. So I'm just curious about your thoughts.
Uh my first thought is that I think um uh that's a question I would wanna um gain our teams insight on. And it's a good su- future superintendent um report item, you know, i- thinking about stabilization, you know, uh because. Remember, nothing can happen unless the legislature, legislature agrees on maps. Everything else stops. So that if they do that in one year, if they do that in two years, um or, you know, until they do it at all, there's nothing that can happen. That said, you know, I I tend to be somebody, I'd rather overplan, you know, I'd rather say, okay, well. Here are the things that we need to attend to that stabilize our our district, you know, because I, because the kids need. Strong district and strong schools, you know, that's, that's what, that's what they need. And so, you know, we have that, maintaining that. Determining how best to do that is is something that I I think I'd wanna put on a superintendent's report, you know, maybe for the next board meeting, just some things to think about. I also think, you know, that the Agency of Ed just hired a chief academic officer, um Aaron Davis, that that. Her background um is is different from many of the people in Vermont that have, that have done that work to date. It's more consistent with um large-scale organizations that are, um, you know, i- implementing. Academic initiatives that are um not um characterized by the depth. That Vermont's academic initiatives have had in the past, like personalized learning plans and how those might relate to graduation requirements. Things of that nature. So it will be important for us to be able to get to know her. And get to know how the Agency of Ed plans to be thinking about the alignment of graduation requirements and what that looks like. We anticipate a twenty-five member team coming here in October to to perform the first dual accreditation. In in the country, uh relative to I B and N E S C. Uh and and we, we sincerely hope. That 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 goes well and that we are accredited in that way. And and that really gives us a sense of, okay. This is what these schools are operating in together in a manner that is, even if we need to make some sort of a shift. It allows us to um to make that shift more gradually because of the strength of what is in place. And and what we are working toward. So one of the things in the district um task force guidelines is is really. Sort of limit the disruption to students. So I would, I would, I would certainly be looking for ways to advocate. Uh specifically for um timelines and some of those operational pieces that um that. That means student experiences and and therefore, and of course, their teachers' experiences are not jarringly different. In unacceptable timelines. Um so what, what, the degree to which we will have the ability to do that is yet to be seen. The degree to which anything will occur at all is yet to be seen. So, you know, I I think um, we can make a list of, these are the things that are on our minds and. These are the possible actions that could be taken at some time, should it look like it's time to think about those things. So just so that it's on our mind.
Yeah, that feels so important because I think back since twenty twenty and all the disruption that we've had. And the fact that we've gone through, you know, how many superintendent changes. And I feel finally. You know, that we've gotten beyond that. So, you know, thinking ahead and anticipating and. Being able to maintain that stability that we finally have reached and needs to continue would be awesome. Right? Anything we can do to help support that in our power is important.
Yep, it's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, there's the summer ketchup.
Any other questions um before we move on to for Dr. Baker or her team? That has come up in someone's mind? Okay, um next up is just a real brief update. Um as folks are aware, Thursday is our retreat. And the focus is on community engagement and David's gonna be working with us. We are going to uh be in the basement of the U U church because we're gonna have, you know. The leadership team, the building leaders, um so there could be twenty to twenty-five of us. And um this way we'll be able to be around tables where it's, you know, they're not sitting there, they're sitting at tables with us. And um really be able to dialogue and participate together, which I'm excited about. So what, um, it starts at four thirty. Um I did um reach out to the school board associ-. Uh the Vermont School Board Association, because I was like, oh, you know, this is retreat training kind of thing. I was told there's no carve-out for that, so we do have to record it. Um so I asked um. Darcy today on her day back, I said, okay, let's re-worn it with a link and um we'll, you know, just record it. And yes, we do understand you'll have breakout tables and it's not necessarily gonna be conducive um to hearing everything. But the readouts will definitely be possible. And importantly, when David is there presenting. And working with us, that'll be good to have that recorded for anyone that wasn't able to make it. You know, so there are some upsides to that as well. Uh and for the community to hear it as well. So um, so that is a little tweak. That I had investigated last, I thought, eh, I better check. And it was mistaken, it's like, okay, um, new rules. There will be a meal served. And so I thought I'd throw out, um sometimes we've served the meal in the beginning. But four thirty is kind of early. And so I would love your input, you know, one option is to continue to do that. Or at a logical break and I can, you know, work with Emily, have Darcy check and with David to see. You know, when would be a good thing? Maybe it's five thirty-six or, you know, something like that, so that we can tell Steve, you know. When to prepare. So what are folks' thoughts? Would, you know, is it better to kind of have it in the middle like that and we can, yeah, as opposed to just rushing it in? Okay, that's kind of what my thought was, but I thought, I have all you guys here, why don't I ask? So I will, you know, work out that detail with Darcy and look forward to those that. You know, not everyone can be there, but um, you know, I, you know, many of us will be. So I'm looking forward to learning. And um seeing how we can then apply that to our community engagement and be very methodical about. You know, inten- intentional um for all the work that we have ahead of us.
We're learning on the operation side too. So the building principals that are not on vacation, you know, they're, they're planning to attend. And so we're all, our directors, we're all there to think, okay, how does this apply to our area and and what can we be doing in that respect? So so we'll all, we'll all be learners together.
Excellent. And I had checked, I thought, well, Ripton might be kind of cool to do it up there, but it's not really air-conditioned, so. And the heat that we've had, you know, we definitely need to be in an air-conditioned. So um if there's no questions, then um we can move on to the next agenda item. No hands. Um second public comment period. And again, um I. Don't know if anyone has joined us. Thank you, Mary Heather, to see um if we have additional Zoom. Nope, okay. And um anyone is, no, no one in the room. So that is um. Done. Um and then uh we have our standard agenda item, board reflections. If anyone has some thoughts that they wanna share at this point in time about the meeting and how it went or. You know, how we're working together, that kind of thing, feel free.
Steve.
At one of our more recent uh meetings last year, we said that we were going to be a little more conscientious about board member conduct. Around um attendance and uh participation in um things. And I noticed that a significant number of board members are missing today. And and there may be, you know, legitimate reason, I wouldn't be judging on that, but um I did notice in the minutes that last time. There was not a list of who was here and who wasn't here. Um and so how are we keeping track of? Uh how are we keeping track of this sort of thing and what's?
Typically, it is in the minutes.
It's in the minutes, the people who are in attendance, I don't list the people who are not.
Okay.
That can be changed if necessary. I guess it's just reference of the board.
Okay, um are are we in a year of gathering data around that or um is there gonna be some sort of action? Because.
I guess we could look at the data for the last year. I think, you know, my impression was that. The attendance had been actually pretty good up until the summer, you know, and I know that there's quite a few people that are on vacation still. At this point in time. But from previous years, um and this is just my kind of gut observation. And not looking at data, so it's not, you know, I can follow up and look at the data. Um I think we actually had. Better attendance, you know, more consistent. I think we most often had all thirteen board members were at least twelve. You know, a present for many of our meetings up until um kind of June timeframe, end of June.
Yeah, and actually, um I'm just thinking too, like in the fall. You know, just as part of our regular rhythm of um, you know, setting the work plan and like before, or you know, serve board self-assessment. That would definitely be something that I can easily pull together and just share with the board. And I guess the other thing is, um, since it's all on minutes for the committees too, we can look at, you know, committee attendance too. You know, something I'm not keeping track of. Share it with the board as part of it.
Yeah, thank you. I think, actually, it's a good idea. Um but, you know, and but I do, you know, that's at least been my sense. Um that we've actually had really pretty good, you know, participation. And it is, it's. August is tough, right? People are really still trying to get those vacations in before the school starts, so. But um, thank you for bringing that up, Steve. Um, anything else?
This isn't necessarily a board reflection, but again, thank you to the leadership team for joining the the meeting tonight, which was really great. To be able to meet you even like across the table. Um and I appreciate that you guys are all here and and your enthusiasm. For the work ahead is really great.
Yeah, and look forward to having you with us on Thursday.
Yes.
And Steve does good food. We always are spoiled, so have a really good meal.
One of the things that you'll see on Thursday also is that we have all returning principals, you know, with the exception of um Tracy Harrington. Who is new in Salisbury, who is a returning principal, right? She's been with our district. So we noticed in the leadership retreat ju- just, just how. Wonderful that is, you know, whereas last year we had three brand-new principals, right? And we had three principals that were in their third year. You know, so it it's, there's a certain sense of calm and competence among our building leadership that. that, that is a, is a really nice place to be as well.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? None on Zoom there? Okay. Well, next up is adjournment. Can I have a motion? Okay, a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Yes.